Good evening, welcome to Board of County Commissioners Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will consider the transmittal of comprehensive plan amendments for review by the State Land Planning Agency, and the Board will consider the adoption of small-scale amendments to the future land use map of the Comprehensive Plan. The Board will also concurrently consider the proposed rezoning of a property that is subject of a small-scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment CPA 1909. At this time, I'll pass things over to Melissa Leinhart to go over the first item of this evening's agenda, and I believe we also have an item that might be a continuance, so I think we probably want to address that at the beginning of the meeting. Ms. Leinhart?
Yes, thank you, sir. Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff for the record. The item that has requested a continuance and would like to speak on the item is Item B3. Mr. Todd Pressman?
Good evening, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Miss Chairman and Commissioners. Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, Number 451 in St. Petersburg. On this item, we would like to move forward or request a continuance to March in order to file a PD site plan, which would be a companion, and also, we are working with contractual issues as well that we want to clean up and get settled as well. So with respect, we will request continuance of this item to the March CPA hearing. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Leinhart, are you comfortable with that date?
It is my understanding that the next two available meetings would be March 9th and April 27th, and it's my understanding those would not allow enough time to process a rezoning application. Adam can probably speak a little bit in more detail on that, but the meeting date that I have is June 15th. That could potentially allow for enough time.
Yes, sir. That's correct. The time to file the application, get it to the zoning hearing master, and get it to the Board, that June date would be the viable date for that.
Mr. Pressman, are you minimal to that?
Our direction, our request is to bring the future land use amendment to March. We will have a plan filed at the time. It would not be a companion, but it would be a bona fide PD plan for presentation in regard to the future land use amendment. But would not be a complete companion reviewed by zoning hearing master and the completion of the variance process.
Well, that's certainly your prerogative, I guess, but Adam, do you have a...
Yeah, I think if the idea is to have the zoning be part of the discussion of the planned amendment, the best way to accomplish that would be to have them heard together as opposed to, by March, the application would still be in process. It would be, I'd say, generally premature to have the Board discuss a zoning that is not ready and fully prepared for action. So I don't... You know what I'm saying? If you want to have the rezoning discussion...
You're rolling the dice is what he's saying, by going first without having the companion rezoning.
Without a completed PD, but we would have a filed plan on record for the Commissioners to consider, and at that time, if the Commission is uncomfortable, you can certainly move the future land use amendment further out into the future.
All right. What's the pleasure of the Board?
To move with the continuation.
To which date?
Staff is saying June, but it's your risk, but am I correct, Adam?
Yeah, June would be the date that both could land together. If the continuation was to March, it would very likely not be in a position for the Board to appropriately consider the zoning site plan.
So in all likelihood, we would hear the presentation and then continue it to June. That's what it sounds like.
Yes, if the idea is for them to be considered together, yes, that'd be correct.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I really just don't want to waste my time by having it come back again and again, and I just think if you want a continuance, we should do it in that posture of June 15th. I'd also like to ask for the record, because I like to do this, I don't know, is there anyone here tonight that had come to address this in particular? Because, you know, it's been an issue in the past where we have people show up and then it gets continued and they don't have an opportunity to speak to it. I would support continuing it to June 15th, because I don't want to put us in a posture to waste our time and energy going over this again. It's already been here in the past.
We'll be happy to go. It's clear what the direction is for the Board, and June will be fine. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Myers to continue to June 15th. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Walstall. No other comments. Please record your vote.
Motion carried. Seven is zero.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Pressman. Ms. Leinhart?
Yes, sir. The first item we have on the agenda is Item A1. This is HC CPA 2201. This is a Comprehensive Plan text amendment to update the commercial locational criteria that's located in the future land use element of the Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. With that, I will turn it over to the presenter, Andrea Papandrew, as well as our consultant, Pat Tayefsky from Inspire Placemaking. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Andrea Papandrew with your Planning Commission staff. I'm not sure why the presentation is not... There we go. This is HC CPA 22-01, Commercial Locational Criteria. This is a text amendment. Our consultant, Pat Tayefsky, will be doing the presentation. I'll be back up at the end to give the recommendation.
Good evening. My name is Pat Tayefsky. I'm with Inspire Placemaking Collective in Orlando. I'm going to take you through a very short PowerPoint. As you all know already, the Comprehensive Plan encourages the creation of a mixed-use community, and also, the idea of accommodating all modes of transportation, not planning just for cars, but pedestrians and bicycles. Related to that, we have a provision in the Comprehensive Plan that has been there for many years that allows the development of commercial establishments within residential future land use categories and also industrial, without having to go through the map amendment process. All it requires is a rezoning. Now, in order to do that, the applicant will have to meet what we call the Commercial Locational Criteria, CLC for short, that is in the future land use element. So staff has been working with us in updating this CLC. I mentioned it's been in the books for many years. There is some outdated language, the waivers. Staff has been getting a lot of requests for waivers, so they needed to look at that. Wanted to make sure that it is still encouraging that mixed-use concept and also the multimodal. Also, wanted to make sure that we're protecting established residential neighborhoods, in particular, the rural area also, and then making sure that the scale of the commercial relates well to the context of where that is located. So we have had many, many opportunities for public input. These slides, I'm not going to go through all the numbers, but we had many, many different ways of reaching out to the public, and we had several meetings with representatives from different communities. So what I'm going to do in the next few slides is to show you where this applies, where the Commercial Locational Criteria applies. So today, and as proposed, it applies within the residential, industrial, and the very lower intensity mixed-use designations on the future land use map. So we grade out the cities, but anything you see in the yellow color, those are residential; in the greenish colors, those are rural agriculture; and the gray colors, those would be your So right now, the way it works is that you have to look at a map called the 2040 Cost Affordable Map that hasn't been kept up to date, and many roads are not on that map. So just recently, a new map was adopted as part of the Comprehensive Plan, and it's called the Context Classification Map. What it does, it treats roads, instead of calling them collector's arterials and all that, they have a name that relates to the context where they are located. So we have suburban residential roadways. As the name indicates, you have residential on both sides, suburban commercial roadways, we have rural roadways. So it made sense to use this map instead. So you see on the slide in different colors, the yellow roads are the residential roads. As the color gets more intensive, that means you get into the urban general or suburban town. Staff took the time to go into this map and circle every single intersection that could potentially qualify for commercial. Compared to what we have today, we had an increase of 345 intersections. So we're opening this up a little bit more to have more opportunities for people to locate this commercial. Now, if we look at it, zooming in a little bit into just one piece, you know, in the county, you see that we have a lot of dots that are very consecutive. We're not talking about miles between nodes. We're talking about every single intersection that has that classification, so keep that in mind for a comment that comes later. Now, we're going to look at this slide and this slide and go back and forth, because the difference between these two slides is that we are excluding certain roadways from more restrictive requirements. So if you're located in a suburban commercial roadway, you don't have to comply with building placement standards, you don't have to comply with minimum, maximum tenant sizes, or they are not subject to any of the auto-related restrictions that we're proposing. So they're free to do, you know, any of the auto-related uses like gas stations, drive-throughs, and all that. This other map introduces, and I'm going to go back and forth, introduces the urban service area boundary. So this is something else that we're putting in to protect the rural area. So anything inside the USA, the urban service area boundary, they don't have to comply with the restrictions that we've been putting, you know, the current or proposed in terms of square footage. They can just use their FAR, their floor area ratio. So we're allowing them to fully develop their sites for what the land use category allows. Now, let's talk a little bit about the changes that we have not made, because all the changes that we got from all the public input sessions, we incorporated the majority of them. Now, there were a few that we could not agree on, and I wanted to list them because it is important to know why we didn't do it. The first one was a request to waive the tenant size and the building design requirements for sites that are along suburban residential roads. If you look at those two graphics, that's what a suburban residential roadway looks like. You see subdivisions on both sides, typically fences on both sides. So we didn't feel that it was fair for all those people who live in those areas to all of a sudden have something commercial, you know, heavy, you know, compared to what they have on their lots. The second one had to do with drive-through establishments. So one of the restrictions that we're putting in is for the very residential areas, for the areas that are very low in density, we're restricting the auto-related uses: drive-throughs, large gas stations, more than eight pumps, and vehicular repair types of uses. So some people in the community wanted us to allow drive-throughs, you know, in those areas, but we feel that drive-throughs belong in other places, not in the residential areas. The next one was the separation between commercial nodes. So you notice in that map that we have a lot of dots, a lot of intersections, very close together. If we were to allow every single intersection to turn into commercial, pretty soon, we're not going to have nodes and quarters. It's going to be continuous strip commercial. So we put a separation requirement, and it's not exaggerated, it's two miles if you're in the rural area, one mile if you're in the urban area, with a possibility for a waiver. So if somebody comes in and says, "We don't have a grocery store in miles from here," it's something that you could consider and say, you know, "There is a node near you, but they don't have a Publix or Winn-Dixie." It's okay for you to have it here. And the last one has to do with building location and design standards. They felt that suburban areas shouldn't have to deal with that, and we felt that even if you're in the suburban area, we should have quality architecture, we should have quality development, quality site design, and responding to all modes of transportation. One item that we changed in the compare current to proposed is that the current CLC restricts office uses to certain locations. We're opening that up. Now, we're going to be treating office just like commercial. We know that there was a big change after the pandemic where commercial is starting to disappear, office. We are opening it up. If you have the perfect node, you can either do office or commercial or both. We have two examples, just to show you how this works. So this is 301. To the right side of the 301, we have a residential area. This is a future land use category. West of 301, it's a suburban mixed-use six. So that's an area intended to have a mix of uses, but in low intensity. And the intersection is a T-intersection with Simons Loop. So today, if we read the Commercial Locational Criteria, we look at the classification of the roadways, and it tells you that you could have commercial at that intersection up to 300 feet away from the intersection. You cannot go beyond 300 feet. And then the size of your building is going to be limited to 5,000 square feet. 5,000 square feet, that's a 7-Eleven, not even a Walgreens or a CVS. So we wanted to open this up a little bit more, and what we're proposing is 1,000 feet. Now, it doesn't mean that your building has to be right at the corner. It can be anywhere within those 1,000 feet, because you never know. I mean, you may not be able to buy the site at the corner. Maybe it's the site next door. Then your building, we're increasing that size to the FAR of the future land use category. In this case, it's an FAR of .25. If we assume that the site is 1,000 by 1,000, you could have up to 250,000 square feet of development. Going to look at the comparison between the two. In terms of uses that are permitted, there's no change between the current language and the proposed language. Maximum distance from the intersection, we're providing flexibility going from 300 to 1,000. In terms of development density, instead of having the 5,000 limitation with no waiver possible, we're going with the FAR. For the first example, we don't need a waiver based on the current commercial criteria. For the proposed, we would need a node separation waiver, because just up the street, there is a Sam's and a Winn-Dixie. So it's something that they would have to come and say, "We need it because..." Give a justification. The next example, it's Bloomingdale Avenue and Watson Road. It's also considered to be a T-intersection, because Watson Road north of Bloomingdale is not classified. So same thing, and let me go back. The categories here are residential. So the site that we're going to be looking at is on the southwest corner. It's residential six. So it's the same idea. Today, you could do 300 feet one way or another. It's 5,000 square foot building, and we're expanding that to now allow 1,000 feet from the intersection, and you could have up to 250,000 square foot of commercial or office, and office. But then there is a restriction that talks about the size of your tenant spaces. The idea is that we don't want all of a sudden to open the doors to large box, big-box retailers, for example. So we're saying, if you're going to have a grocery store, we're giving you 50,000 square feet. Everybody else will have to be at 20,000 square feet. So the idea is to have like your neighborhood shopping center. The comparison, in terms of the uses, and this is, I've been talking about the auto-related uses, in this case, there would be a difference. Today, you could do any use that would be included in CN, Commercial Neighborhood, or GC, Commercial General. The proposal says, because you're in a residential six, we're going to let you do all the commercial uses except for drive-throughs, large gas stations, you can still do up to eight pumps, and vehicle repair uses. The other items are similar. And then for the bottom, where it says other considerations, that's where what I mentioned about the 20,000 square foot for a tenant, 50,000 for a grocery store, and then there are some standards, general standards, related to building placement and design. And I'm going to let Andrea talk about this part.
So the latest draft language was transmitted to the various agencies for comment, and no objections were received. It is consistent with the following objectives and policies, all of which are in your packet. The proposed text amendment is consistent with the future land use element, specifically policies on neighborhood and community development, commercial locational criteria, commercial character, and community planning. It is also consistent with the following mobility section goals and policies, specifically ones on promoting connectivity, providing choices when not driving, and ensuring compatibility context. And again, all these policies are in your packet. Based on this, Planning Commission recommends that the proposed text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. So that concludes this presentation. Myself, our consultant, and Melissa Leinhart are available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item? Each person will be given three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. My name is Todd Josko, 3832 West Platt Street in Tampa. It's really good to see everybody in person. I'm here tonight on behalf of NAOP Tampa Bay, which is the Commercial Real Estate Trade Association, respectfully asking that you not transmit these CLC policies. Say that reluctantly, because as an organization, we've always tried to support staff and be supportive of staff, but we're just not there on these policies. We view these as a very extreme departure from current policy, and really based on just unrealistic and over-aspirational walkability goals that may be appropriate for the urban core, but just aren't appropriate for suburban and rural Hillsborough County. I can't speak specifically to the presentation, because it's new, and part of the frustration, I think, of this process is, is that at every step, there's been a new presentation that we really are hearing things for the first time. There's been, you know, a couple of hearings at the Planning Commission, there's been workshops, and it just hasn't been really a productive process. So we would respectfully say that it's just not ready. It's not ready to be transmitted to Tallahassee. It probably would be best suited to include these provisions when you update your future land use element and incorporate those in that greater context, but we respectfully ask that you do not transmit at this time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Thank you. Commissioners, my name is Jake Kramer. I'm a land use attorney at Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street. I've been fielding calls, really all week, from agricultural landowners that are concerned about these policies. They're concerned that these new policies are going to disproportionately affect the rural areas of the county. You know, I do this for a living, and I've tried to go through the policies that are being proposed tonight, but there have been so many versions over the last year, it's really hard to follow them and to understand where this is going. You know, one thing that surprised me with someone with a planning background is the first question I asked myself is, "How much commercial does the county really need?" And shouldn't that be the first question we ask before we start tweaking all of these policies? What we might find is that many of these areas need more commercial, or maybe we'll find the opposite, but I don't see where any of that analysis has been undertaken. What I see is that there have been community meetings, and some feedback has been incorporated, but feedback from other quarters doesn't seem to have been incorporated or built in. Ultimately, I think what's going to happen if this moves forward is you're going to get many, many more Comprehensive Plan amendments, because folks won't be able to move forward under their residential categories. They'll have to come to you all for a commercial category, and so you're going to be receiving many more applications. And think about a small business owner that just wants to put up a fairly small retail shop, say, out in Lutes. They're going to have to go through six to 12 months of additional process and tens of thousands of dollars for a Comprehensive Plan amendment. So I think there is some positive here that we can work together on. It's just not there. And I would ask that you give staff some direction to come back and work with the NAOP associations, agricultural landowners, and let's see if we can get this right. I think there's positive here, but we're not there yet. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening. Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson, and I would actually respectfully disagree with my colleague Jake. I don't think there's a lot of great or good in the proposal that we have before us. I think we're messing with something that has been in the Comprehensive Plan for more than 20 years, and we are just completely changing it up without really any clear direction as to where that policy direction came from. And I think what you heard tonight was a gross oversimplification of a very complex issue, and I would respectfully request that you not transmit it.
Anyone else want to speak to this item? Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'm Ron Weaver, 401 East Jackson Street, with the Sterns Weaver Miller Law Firm. Indeed, there are maybe a few good things that have been done the last couple of months by the staff, including adding back in gas stations. Not enough, but adding them back in. But the nine things out of the 10 things needed by owners and those who are without a baby doctor or a tax audit place or your insurance office, or the basic retail that only comes with a drive-through model, there are stores, there are brands that only come with a drive-through model, and suddenly, you're killing all these drive-throughs. So I'd have to agree with my partner, Mr. Kramer, that not only should we delay this, but we should take the two or three things that are promising and find a quick way to take the places where we need to expand the magnitude of the allowed retail and take the good stuff that they've come forward with in that regard, and study it and find a way to incorporate the needs of neighborhoods that were not adequately provided for retail. We do not want food deserts. We do not want baby doctor deserts. We do not want tax audit office, insurance office deserts out in these areas. And then, secondly, when we originally, for 30 years, have had residential, had a certain amount of commercial allowed therein, you know why? So you'd have the commercial near the residential, so you could walk to it. And so we are trying to reduce trips. Let's study these proposals for really reducing trips. Let's study them for protecting existing neighborhoods. If that's the really ideal goal, one of the protections is to make sure they have nearby office and nearby retail, and that they have reasonable access with respect to the nature of the beast. The two worst things about these rules, however, are these, and you saw four things on the PowerPoint where they said they couldn't help. Sorry, we're closed. The four things included, number one, requiring parking in the rear. I don't know about you, and it's not just women in our family who are afraid of going to a place where you can't see the parking from the street. You've got to go around back in the dark. Requiring parking on the side or in the back, and no parking in the front, and no circulation in the front where you can see folks going in and out, is an urban idealistic academic not-good idea, respectfully. And they sit on, "Sorry, we can't help you with that." And then, no drive-throughs. Some businesses that are desperately needed in these neighborhoods only have a drive-through model, and you're just killing them all. And the way they kill them all, by the way, is by what's known as goodbye to CG. If you look on the chart, they said CN uses yes, CG no. CG includes drive-throughs, and that's how they kill drive-throughs wholesale, throughout this provision. And you mentioned that, they mentioned four different things they could not help us with. Quite frankly, we need to make sure that these businesses that are desperately needed in these communities can come with a model that works with safety and a layout that won't make people afraid to go there and have to park in the back in the dark and then try to go back to their car at whatever hour. Let's allow a reasonable amount of parking on the street. Let's allow a reasonable amount of circulation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else want to speak to this item? All right, we'll go into Board Discussion. Clerk's office? Oh, that's you? You said I was going to say Planning Commission.
That's me this evening. Sorry about that. If you would permit me, sir, I would like to clarify a few things on the record just prior to Board Discussion, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
I wanted to clarify about how much commercial does the county need? We did look at that as part of the 2045 population projections. That showed that we had enough employment for the projected population through 2045, and that included services like retail. The other thing that I would mention regarding that is the mixed-use categories and the more intensive future land use categories like office-commercial 20. Those categories, the majority of them do not require meeting commercial locational criteria, and we have pie charts that are part of the backup of the presentation, if you would like to see the breakdown of how much of those categories we have. So we are really mostly dealing with residential future land use categories here. And then I will also say that the background research that is located on our website and that we've gone through in all of the previous six outreach meetings, our finding was that most jurisdictions, they do not consider non-residential uses in residential plan categories, and we do do that in unincorporated Hillsborough County, and we still will consider to do that. The other comment I wanted to make about the offices, that was a comment that we had made, or that we had heard at the various outreach meetings. That was a major change that we made in the most recent drafts. We added office as a possibility at all four quadrants of every intersection, so there's not a no office, there's not a prohibition on office. not a no office, there's not a prohibition on office. And then the comments about the ag community. We definitely heard from the rural folks, more rural residential folks in the outreach meetings. I specifically reached out to Simon Bolin. He's the Agribusiness Development Manager of Hillsborough County's Extension Office, and he is the county staff liaison to the Agricultural Economic Development Council. No objections were received from any agency, including his. And I personally spoke to Simon just to make sure he understood the changes that were being proposed and to ask if he had any questions and just to gain his, you know, make sure he had a comfort level with the proposed language, which my impression was is that he did. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record, and thank you for that opportunity.
All right. Thanks for the additional information. Commissioner Wostol?
Thank you, Chair. I'm actually going to be less prepared today because I was caught off guard by the consultant that gave a PowerPoint presentation. I had read the 335 pages pretty thoroughly because I wanted to understand this, but that was new information. Actually, I believe Mr. Josko presented that. I wasn't prepared to see, but that speaker did say a few things that I would like clarification on, if she could come back to the mic. And I'm going to be brief in my first questions, and I'd like to hear what the rest of the board says, and then I'll yield the floor and ask them to come back. Ma'am, what was your name and who are you with?
My name is Pat Tayeski.
Okay.
I'm with Inspired Placemaking Collective.
And you're from where?
Orlando.
Okay. Yeah, I'm usually more prepared, but I was not informed that they would have some third-party speaker here, so I apologize. You said a couple of things that were important to me consistently. You kept saying "we feel." So who is "we"?
So we were hired by the Planning Commission, so I have been working very closely with Melissa Andrea and Melissa Zornita. So we're working as a team. It's not something that a consultant is coming in and proposing to change. It's more like they reached out to a consultant and said, you know, help us do this.
Okay, so you said that "we feel" like drive-throughs don't belong there. They don't belong in a different area. You said that "we feel" we should control architecture of certain businesses. That sounds like we're going to try and make the entire county like an HOA, which I used to be the vice president of one, and they, right, that's pretty micromanag-y. On one of your slides, which you clicked through those really fast, I appreciate the urgency, I guess, but it looked like 257 people were effectively reached out of 1.5 million, and I'll be favorable and round up. So that's 2/10 of 1,000, so basically 0.0002 percentage of the population was effectively communicated to in this pretty heavy-handed policy. Is that the right math?
I will let Melissa talk about how many emails they sent out inviting people.
It was your PowerPoint. It said that you had reached out to that many people. So, okay, I was going to specifically ask, did we reach out to the AEDC? I'm glad you brought that up because I actually heard from them today. They are in opposition of this, so I'm not sure what miscommunication might have gone on there. I was wondering if we had the opportunity to reach out to, because for me, the major growth corridors in that side of the county are going to be 301. Did we reach out to our partners at FDOT?
I do believe, we have three stakeholder meetings, and I do believe representatives from FDOT were invited to them, but I don't, this has been going on for 18 months, so I'm trying to reach back on my memory. I don't believe anyone actually attended those meetings from FDOT, but we did have a meeting that focused on more of the public sector employees to try to get their input.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I tried to reach out to them as well to see if they had buy-in. And did we reach out to Thea, who I know has, I know that that's Commissioner Sepeda's board, but I know that they have some pretty interesting aspirations that I've seen in the months about 301 and kind of an elevated connector, and that's another critical corridor up and down the 301. Did we touch base with them just to try and give them some buy-in?
If you will allow me, I can pull up the spreadsheets to see exactly who we invited. They were a very extensive list, including every homeowners' association and unincorporated Hillsborough County. At one point, we sent out thousands of emails. So let me refresh that, and I can get back to you on that for Thea.
Okay, okay. For now, Chair, I'll yield the floor and hear what my colleagues say.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this really impacts, I represent the majority, if not all, of the agriculture in Hillsborough County, and I have gotten quite a few calls, and there are serious concerns about these changes. You know, when we hear the words on the unincorporated part of Hillsborough County, which is the majority of Hillsborough County, like the connectivity, walkability, and things like that, it really, you know, as the representative District Four and understanding the heartbeat of the community, it's not what they want. It is glaringly not what they want. So this whole grid and connectivity and walkability that we're trying to promote, which I do understand that component, listen, I love Seminole Heights. I don't live there. I live in the unincorporated part in Brandon, and I love it that you have a house and then a dentist and two houses, and I think that's great, but that's a lifestyle. Downtown Tampa, what a wonderful place for people to live. You've got Publix right under you. You can work out, you can get your coffee, and you can walk your dog at parks. That's a lifestyle. But speaking for the folks on the unincorporated part of Hillsborough County, we move out there, I move out there because I want to live in a traditional neighborhood. Unless it's Chick-fil-A, I don't want a drive-through around me. I agree with that. But we live out there because that's a lifestyle. And the example that you used, I think it's interesting, the Watson Road is something that we cannot use or compare to the rest of the county. Commissioners, you all were here when the folks from Winthrop were here. That's the community they're referencing. It's not going to be duplicated, Commissioner Myers, on our side of town in our district. So I just have major concerns. I think sometimes part of public service is not the laws you make, it's some things that you prevent from being done. And I'm not saying that some of these ideas aren't great. Again, we do have some new board members, so we haven't had the privilege of looking at this stuff for a couple of years, like a lot of the commissioners, but I do think that there's some components in here that we can look at and maybe towards the end of the year, adopt. But at this time, I'm just very concerned. One of the speakers spoke about the parking lot and safety in the back. I have a concern about that. I also like to drive by and see if there's a lot of people in a place. I may not go there. So there's just so many components and issues that I see related to this that are going to impact the rural communities and the unincorporated part of Hillsborough County that I'm just not willing to support transmittal of this. I know some other commissioners are going to speak, but I'm going to go ahead and make a motion for non-transmittal directing staff not to transmit the proposed text amendment as outlined in the update of the commercial locational criteria listed at A1 on the agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Yes, I was just going to say I agree with Josh, Commissioner Wostol, and Commissioner Owen, but there's too many restrictions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you. I just want to say that when I had my briefing on this this week, I really, if I had been elected to the commission last November, I would be not wanting to make a vote on something like this without having more time to consider all of the details that are in here related to all kinds of different things. The land use stuff is so, there's so much, and we are going to be considering our future land use element in a much larger way over the next six months. And I just think, I am going to support the motion not to transmit it, but I think that we should not kill the work that's been done here. I think that we should just take the time to integrate it into our discussion about the future land use element and really have everyone have a chance to understand what the details are that are being proposed. And then, if we disagree about whether or not we want drive-throughs or not or office uses or different things, you know, we can hash that out and we can disagree about that. But I think that to pass something tonight that's this detailed with a brand-new board is really, there's just, I think, too much in it to be able to go forward. So I will do that, but I think it does need to live again as we consider the future land use element later in the year.
Commissioner Kep?
Thank you. I know that staff has worked for a long time on this and has done a lot of significant engagement in bringing it back. I also think it's really hard to be new and see this for the first time. It's a big, a big plan to think about, and I appreciated it tonight especially. I don't think, before quite, I saw the little demonstration exactly how it would impact, and I was glad to see that. I think, I have a feeling that as you're here longer, I think you might hear more from the community, which is feedback, about the kind of feedback, and I know I'm a countywide county commissioner, I may live in the city, but I have been out in the community a lot for six years, all over, talking to people about what they want. I know people in Plant City love that they have Plant City to be in, and I think it's one of the greatest places in terms of walkability and the kinds of sensibilities that you get from an urban area. And it's really, to me, it's not, you know, it's not about lifestyles as much, it's really about traffic safety. We're one of the most unsafe counties, you'll hear this, number two in the nation over and over and over again for car, pedestrian, and bicycle deaths, fatalities, injuries. This is about making it more walkable. When I go around the county, our crowded roads, children being safe in crosswalks, when I'm around the county, I hear a lot, and I have had, truly, in other parts, I did not even know about Winthrop, per se, until I started going around to other places and people said, we want to live in a place like Winthrop. I had people telling me that all over. I've had people interested in that in Ruskin, in Gibsonton, in Town and Country, and in a lot of other places, up by Citrus, Lutes. I've heard a lot of that. So I think, and I think one of the key things is this criteria, and, you know, I appreciate the work that's been done. I think it could, I think people do appreciate having kind of a little walkable downtown or neighborhood corner, kind of harkening back to how those things have traditionally been. So I'm just going to say that obviously we're not there tonight to move on this, but I do think that there is a lot of support for the kinds of changes that this could bring to a community and make it a more livable, walkable, but a really safer place for people and give them opportunities for a lifestyle, no matter where they are in the county. I do hear a lot of clamoring for that and a lot of people that want some things like that. So I don't accept that it's, that that's something that's rejected all over the place because I see it differently.
All right, Commissioner Wostol and Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Chair. So I do believe that there are some good sections in it, specifically when it comes to public safety and the strip malls. When I was getting my briefing, I pointed out, how do we make sure that we don't allow 301 to become US-19, which was like the most deadly road in America for a while, I believe, is the correct statistic? So those small chunks, the biggest challenge that was presented was that, well, we could pass this now and then redline later. So I gave it a really good college try, and I'm like, well, I don't have enough red ink. This is just a lot. And then for us to pass something that we are going to bleed red all over also doesn't seem honest to the commercial sector and also to staff. So there's just, it's been said, and I won't beat the dead horse, but there's just a lot of variables. It doesn't seem to make sense. I understand this was staff-driven. I was wondering if the commercial sector came forward and asked for these changes and improvements, but a lot of these things, when we talk about improving the attractiveness and the walkability, well, that's largely up to the private sector to present something that is attractive enough to the buyer to buy, in my opinion. So those small things are just too heavy-handed for me. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be brief. I'd like to see where staff can work with, I think it's the NAOP organization, and we had four speakers to say how they'd like to be involved with some of the changes, if staff can work with them. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. So we got a motion not to transmit by Commissioner Owen, second, Commissioner Myers. No other comments, please record your vote. My system is down here. Okay.
Mr. Chair, we can go ahead and do an oral vote. Our system just went down for a moment.
Okay. You're working to repair it?
Yes, sir.
I hope, okay, thank you.
Hagan?
Yes.
Cameron Sepeda?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Wostol?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item.
I just wanted to say thank you for that feedback, and we will work with the stakeholders regarding that item and incorporate the parts that we heard that people liked into the future land use element update. Moving on to item A2, HCCPA 2220. This is a future land use map amendment along Bullfrog Creek. I will pass that over to Andrea Papenger, who's going to present the item. Thank you.
HTV, if you'd bring up the presentation for 22-20, please. Andrea Papenger with your Planning Commission staff. This is HCCPA 22-20, 12398 Bullfrog Creek Road. Next slide, please. This is a privately initiated, excuse me, regular map amendment. The site is approximately 122.18 acres. The request is to move from suburban mixed-use six to residential nine. Next slide, please. The site is located within the urban service area and three community plans, Riverview, Gibsonton, and South Shore area-wide systems. Next slide, please. This is an aerial of the subject site. It is east of Bullfrog Creek Road and I-75. To the west is the Golden Aster Scrub Preserve and Trail. Surrounding the site to the north, east, and south is single-family residential and vacant residential properties. The site itself is vacant, and it has a 73.85 acres of a man-made lake. Next slide, please. So the adopted future land use category for the site is suburban mixed-use six. Suburban mixed-use six surrounds the site to the north and south. To the east is residential nine, and to the west across I-75 is natural preservation. Next slide, please. The proposal before you today is to go to the residential nine future land use category. Next slide, please. Moving to residential nine would increase density on site up to 1,099 units. It would also increase intensity on site up to approximately 2.7 million square feet. If approved, the plan amendment would permit urban-scale commercial uses and suburban-scale research corporate park and light industrial would no longer be permitted on site. Next slide, please. The plan amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan, specifically flu policies on neighborhood and community development. The proposed plan amendment would result in increase in density and intensity that is compatible with the development pattern in the surrounding area. It is also consistent with Objective 13 and Policy 13.3, which indicate that new development shall not adversely impact environmentally sensitive areas. The property has a 73.85 acres of a man-made lake, and it qualifies for upland preservation. Next slide, please. The plan amendment is also consistent with the following community plans. The site is in the residential district of the Riverview Community Plan, which encourages residential development that complements the surrounding character. The proposed would be a natural extension. The proposed would be a natural extension of the existing residential nine to the east of the site. All three plans have goals related to environmental protection sustainability. As I said before, there's a large number of 73.85 acres of the site is a man-made lake, and there's potential for upland preservation and clustering on-site. Next slide, please. And the full list of all these policies are in your packet. Based on this, Planning Commission recommends the proposed map amendment be found consistent with goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. So that concludes the presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from the applicant. Each representative has three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. Sorry, let me just pull this up. All right. Good evening. For the record, Addie Clark, 400 North Ashley Drive, Tampa, 33603. Andrea did a great job at orienting you as to where the site is located, so I'll skip past that. The request before you tonight is to change the future land use from suburban mixed-use six to residential nine, which is the first step in the process to allow development that better complements the existing surrounding residential development pattern and allows the density that a site so close to employment centers requires. This is only the first step in the process, as the site is currently zoned planned development that allows 600,000 square feet of mixed industrial warehouse use. The proposed map amendment, if approved, would render the existing PD plan as ineffective and inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, ultimately voiding the currently approved 600,000 square feet of industrial mixed use. Because of this, the site must then go through the PD rezoning process and appear before staff and this board again before any development permits can be drawn. This request is compatible with the comprehensive plan because by amending the future land use designation, the currently allowed plethora of uses under SMU six will be reduced, which better reflects the existing development pattern as previously mentioned. The change to RES nine would prohibit multiple land uses that are currently allowed in SMU six today, such as light industrial, research corporate park, gas station, car wash, any drive-throughs, and vehicle repair shops. Again, SMU six allows these types of uses today, whereas RES nine does not. Now for a bit of background about the precedent for this request, in 1985, the area was originally designated as part of the I-75 corridor plan to provide intense mixed-use developments parallel to the interstate. As time went on, the area developed in a more residential pattern, which is reflected by the single-family neighborhoods in the vicinity. Back in 2014, Planning Commission recognized that development pattern and that the mixed-use future land use categories did not accurately reflect the existing development patterns in multiple areas of the county, which is why you can see here, and as Andrea mentioned, the area just to the east of the site was changed from SMU six to the more appropriate and compatible RES nine. And this area gives a better visual of how the area is proliferated with single-family housing. Diverse housing stock in the form of multifamily is needed in order to provide workforce housing for the nearby employment centers. Oops. And again, it's important to reiterate that the safeguard, that is the PD rezoning and the permitting process, makes it so that the entitlements that are requested by this map amendment cannot be unlocked until those processes are completed in full and deemed acceptable by county staff and this board. The rezoning process includes a more detailed civil, environmental, and transportation analysis, all of which undergo staff review before appearing before this board today. And I just want to mention really quickly, a lot of those numbers were based on the 122-acre site in full.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you.
Good evening. Steve Henry Lindson Associates, 5023 West Law, Tampa, 33607. So what I wanted to present to you is, we had done the traffic analysis for the project, and this was based on the land uses that are allowed under the, actually, upland area of the site. Make sure I click to the right one here. So what we looked at was what could be developed under the SMU six today, the upland area, versus what could be developed under the RES nine. And what this graphic illustrates is the daily trip generation. So based on the SMU six that's there today and land uses that would be allowed into there, it'd be about 5,193 daily trip ends compared to about 2,500 under the SMU six land use. Then we also looked at the peak hour. And on the left is the AM peak hour, and then on the right is the PM peak hour. And the blue shows the, what can be developed under the SMU six, and the orange is under the SM, under the RES nine. And as you can see in the AM peak hour, there'd be a net reduction in traffic. And then also in the PM peak hour, a pretty significant reduction in the PM peak hour trips for the SMU land uses versus the RES nine. We did look at the transportation system, both based on the existing traffic that's out there today, and then also on the 2045. And again, this would be a net decrease in traffic, and so that's what we looked at from that. But we did actually add the traffic to the network in both scenarios. I'm happy to go through that analysis if you'd like, but that, basically, the end of the result is that what we propose you tonight, it would be a net reduction in the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Malaya Storm. I'm with Bowman Consulting, the civil engineer for this project, 5404 Cypress Center Boulevard. Sorry, we just moved, so I had to memorize that before I came here. So I wanted to speak on the environmental considerations. And we worked one-on-one with an environmental consultant on this project, and before you is showing the wetland map, I believe, before I presented, she was trying to state that per your guys' code, we would only be able to develop 1.25 times the upland acreage of this property, rather than the full acreage, obviously, due to the wetland impacts as well as the lake. So we did want you guys to take that into consideration and have broken down that acreage on the slides in front of you today. And then we also wanted to let you all know that we don't, at this time, plan to impact the flood zone, Bullfrog Creek, or any of the wetlands on-site. If you have any questions, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the applicant team? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Seeing none, no need for applicant rebuttal. Let's pleasure the board. Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Myers, have any other comments? Okay, if we have no other comments, can we, please, count your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Now we need a motion to transmit CPA 22-20.
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers. No comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, thank you. On the next item, we have a small-scale plan amendment and a related rezoning. Ms. Leinhardt, you want to introduce the item?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The next item is item B1, HCCPA 1909, which is a future land use map amendment located on Boy Scout Road and Grove Lane. I will pass it over to Mr. David Hay, who will be presenting the item. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. David Hay, Planning Commission staff. If you could please pull up the presentation for 1909, please. There we go. All right. Good evening, commissioners. Again, David Hay, Planning Commission staff. This next item is Hillsborough County's Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1909. Next slide, please. CPA 1909 is located in northwest Hillsborough County along Boy Scout Road, just north of Grove Lane. It is located within the rural service area and also within the boundaries of the Keystone Odessa Community Plan. Next slide, please. The subject site of HCCPA 1909 is a privately-initiated map amendment, again, in northwest Hillsborough County, approximately five acres in size. The aerial shows that the surrounding area is predominantly rural and single-family homes. The land use of agricultural rural 1 to 5, agricultural estate 1 to 2.5, and residential 1 are predominant in the area. The subject property is northwest of the Boy Scout Road-Grove Lane intersection. Tarpret Springs Road, Lutz Lake Fern Road, and the Pasco-Hillsborough County line are to the north. Gunn Highway and the Sun Coast Parkway are to the east, while Race Track Road is to the south. Patterson Road and the Pinellas-Hillsborough County line are to the west. Next slide, please. The subject site has that adopted agricultural rural 1 to 5 land use classification, that's that darker green color. The agricultural estate, the agricultural estate 1 to 2.5 uses are immediately to the south, are in the Echo Lake Development and the Lakeside Groves Estate Development. That's that lighter green color directly to the south. The areas along Boy Scout Road include agricultural, park, and recreation, and residential uses. The agricultural estate 1.5, the agricultural estate 1 to 2.5, and residential 1 are all the predominant land uses within that area. Next slide, please. On this slide, you could see that the subject site has changed to the agricultural estate 1 to 2.5. Next slide, please. Take a quick little tour. Here, we're looking north. Actually, we're looking south. The subject site is outlined in red. Next slide, please. Now we're looking west. The subject site is shown with that pin, the red pin, on the left. Next slide. Here, we're looking north. Again, the subject site is where that pin is located. Next slide, please. Here, we're looking west. You could see the subdivision directly to the south. Next slide, please. Now we'll go down to the ground level. We're looking onto the subject site from Boy Scout Road. Next slide. Now we are looking southwest from Boy Scout Road. The subject site is located on the right of the photo. Next slide. Here, we've moved south down Boy Scout Road on this next photo, so the subject site would be behind the photographer. And then, next slide. And then here, the final photo, we're looking northeast from Boy Scout Road to the farm that's directly across the street. So again, the subject site is out of frame to the left. Next slide, please. The currently adopted land use classification of agricultural residential 1 to 5 allows one dwelling unit on the subject site. The suburban-scale neighborhood commercial officer multi-purpose projects are limited to a build-out of 40,000 or an FAR of .25, whichever is less. With the land use change to agricultural estate 1 to 2.5, the subject site would have a potential build-out of up to two dwelling units. Again, suburban-scale commercial is limited to .25 FAR. It should be noted that there are wetlands on the site that reduce the uplands to under the five acres. Again, the wetland density credit is not applicable within the Keystone Odessa Community Plan. Next slide, please. The Planning Commission reviewed the comprehensive plan and found that the proposed map amendment request for the agricultural estate future land use category would be inconsistent with the adopted policy guidance within the comprehensive plan. Your Planning Commission found two main areas of inconsistency. The overall, within the future land use element, it encourages new development in the rural service area to not exceed the one unit to five-acre desired rural development pattern. Unless recognized as a planned village or suburban enclave, this subject site is not one of those. The subject site is not recognized as that. Also, the Keystone Odessa Community Plan seeks to preserve the rural character and is not supportive overall of increasing density within the community above what was recognized during the adoption of the community plan and following, and the following update. Since this is not a legal lot of record and was subdivided after the adoption of the community plan and contains those wetlands on-site, the comprehensive plan would not support the overall increase of density. Therefore, the Planning Commission recommends to you all this evening that the planning, that you all find HCCPA 1909 inconsistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Applicant here. Be given three minutes, per representative.
I guess they erased it from previous. I guess they erased it from previous.
Good evening, commissioners. Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, number 451 in St. Petersburg, Florida. This is future land use amendment 1909. We're proud to come forward with a companion zoning hearing master recommendation for approval.
So just click this now. Just click that right there. Yep, you can use that or this.
Okay, thank you. So again, we're happy to come forward with the ZHM recommendation for approval. Happy to come forward with your Development Services Department with a recommendation for approval, and widespread community support with 40 letters and 79 signatures in support in the record for you. David very well went through the location of the site. The Planning Commission states that the Keystone Odessa Plan does not recognize wetlands for acreage. So this proposed resolution is to address that, along with the companion zoning, which will place restrictions, which address the issue specifically. But the very simple goal, Ms. Chairman Commissioners, is to build one single home on five acres that does conform with the immediate area. Legislative history, this was heard by the Board of County Commissioners, they remanded it for a rezoning, which we did. I'm going to say again, the zoning hearing master recommended approval with one condition, that there be one single-family home. The current lot is unbuildable because of layers of bureaucracy, which end up with a Keystone Odessa Plan not recognizing wetlands at density. This five-acre site is unbuildable. This future land use change at 1 to 2.5 corrects that problem, along with the zoning hearing master report and her restriction. Development Services tell you it's consistent, it's compatible, and they find the request approvable, restricting development to one single residential unit. Planning Commission staff report does state, directly from the report, it would be in line with the development pattern, would not result in a radical departure from the existing large lot, mostly rural, character. Zoning Hearing Master, I want you to see it from her report, is for approval with the one condition of restriction. Planning Commission recommendation was issued before the zoning hearing master record, and the Planning Commission does not consider the zoning elements under their decision. You have a new property rights amendment that specifically tells you to make decisions with respect for property rights, with respect for people's rights to participate in decisions, and consider decisions making the right of property owner to use, maintain, develop, and improve his or her property for personal use, which is not occurring here. The big picture is protect the area from urban sprawl. This is a low-density residential rezoning. You can see from the report on all four sides, it's exactly the same, it's compatible. When you look at the surrounding development, both locally and the subdivisions and further out, it is compatible. We have a lot of community support, which I'm going to hand out to you now. And if I may, with 20 seconds, 78. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Pressman. All right, now we'll go into the public hearing. Each person will allow three minutes. Caution you to have your comments related to the CPA, not the rezoning. We're going to handle the rezoning next. So.
I'm the applicant. I don't know, you said community support.
I can't hear you.
You're asking for person's support, Ms. Chairman?
Is he the applicant, or is he?
I'm the applicant.
Okay, well, come forward. Yeah, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much.
And then which one did you have? It was this one, right?
Yes.
And then just go with this. There you go. You can just click through on the arrows.
Okay.
Is it? There we go. All right. Good evening, county commissioners. My name is Paul Capola. I am the applicant. Thank you for this opportunity to make this presentation this evening. As Mr. Pressman stated, we are here on comp plan amendment 1909 and subsequently scheduled companion rezoning. The issue of due diligence had come up prior, prior BOC hearing in March 2022, when this comp plan was informally remanded back for the companion rezoning to refresh the recollections and the benefit of the new commissioners. The Hillsborough County appraiser records indicate the property used as vacant residential, and I have been paying property tax on the value of... and I have been paying property tax on the value of a vacant residential parcel since it was purchased. The issue of precedence has also come up at the March B O C C hearing, uh, regarding this legislative comp plan amendment. This slide contains statements that memorialize in the transcript from the March hearing that includes a posed question. What if the applicant were to pair this comp plan amendment with this rezoning and bring them in together? Would that provide context that would set, wouldn't set a precedent? The response was, it would control fu- future development. In that same context, it was stated, in the past, we, we, we do rezoning and comp plan amendments side by side. We build in context in the record. That's a little different than just doing a comp plan amendment alone. Providing some context in the record in what would distinguish this parcel from any other parcel would be beneficial in setting the uniqueness of this and not establishing a precedent. This slide contains a list of, of what is unique and distinguishable about this parcel. In light of time, I will only summarize the first two points. As requested by the Board of County Commissioners in March twenty twenty-two, this comp plan amendment is coupled with a companion rezoning, restricting the parcel to one single family home. The zoning hearing master recommends approval for the, for that same restriction. There is no increase in density. The original undivided parcel would have qualified for one single family home, and after the subdivision, the parcel as a whole, parcels as a whole, would still qualify for the one single family home. Just briefly, Commissioners, term piercing community plan has been mentioned. This standard is similar to the piercing of corporate veil, often requires the existence of fraud, intentional misconduct, wrongdoing, ongoing disregard of the integrity of the community plan. That is simply not the case with this, this comp plan amendment. Mr. Pressman mentioned the community support in his presentation, the vast majority of those letters were signed over a few hours in one week, and I did not get one verbal objection to sign a letter in support. I, I believe that if I canvassed the entire neighborhood, I would continue to got, receive overwhelming support. I merely am asking the board to grant me my personal rights afforded to me under the Hillsborough County Property Rights Amendment. Lastly, when contemplating my conclusion of this presentation, I recalled the words so eloquently made by Madam Commissioner Myers that are represented in this slide. I bought the property in good faith. At the direction of the Board of County Commissioners, I worked for, with staff for a solution, and I want to build a single family home. Thank you for your time, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from applicant team?
Uh, good evening, Commissioners.
Hold on, sir.
Can you hear me okay? I'm here virtually.
Is there anyone else here to speak from the applicant's team? Yes. Good evening.
Hello. Hello, County Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today about our property in Keystone. My name is Madeline Capola, and I am nineteen years old. Paul Capola is my dad. I have lived in the Tampa Bay area almost my entire life, and I'm an economics major at the University of South Florida. This property in Keystone was purchased one year after I was born in two thousand and three. The property is owned in a trust in which my younger sister and I are the sole beneficiaries. This property holds a special place in my heart. I grew up riding horses and took riding lessons at West Coast Morgan's Equestrian Center, which is about a hundred yards away from our property. I recall driving by the property as a child and asking my dad when we're going to live there. The answer from my dad was always someday. What I didn't know at the time was that because my dad had full custody of my younger sister and I, that he thought it was in our best interest to live close to my dad's side of the family in Trinity while raising two daughters as a single parent. I have memories of the property from back when I was a small child. On occasion, when leaving West Coast Morgan's, we would stop by the property and pick oranges when there were orange trees still there. One of the most unusual memories I have of the property was when my cousin Joey, at the age of about seven years old, was riding his dirt bike that he received for Christmas and crashed into the property's barbed fence. To this day, he still has the scar on his chest from the incident, and it comes up in conversation. However, if you were to ask him what the scar was from, he would say something more epic like a shark attack. I always just roll my eyes and laugh. Commissioners, the point of me telling you this story is to explain to you that this property is not only unique as described by Mr. Pressman and my dad, but it is also unique to me. This property has been in our family for almost my entire life, and I have very fond memories of it, and I've always dreamed of having a family farmhouse on it for as long as I can remember. I have always envisioned it as our family home where we can gather together for Christmases and other celebrations, both now and in the future, when my sister and I start families of our own. This property will always remain in our family and will always remain in our hearts. No other property will suffice. I hope that my dad will have the, have the opportunity to fulfill his promise of someday, and you will allow us to build our dream family farm home on this property for us and our family's future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Capola. You should have gone first. Um, all right, so that concludes the applicant's team. Is that? Is he from the applicant, from the team or is he? Okay.
I'm just, I'm just a neighbor.
All right. We're getting to the neighbors. Um, next, we're going to the public hearing. Each person can have three minutes. I think we also have someone that's signed up virtually, so, good evening, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dicky Davis, and I reside at one zero five one three Lake Williams Drive, Odessa, Florida, three three five five six, twenty-six fifteen. And I have lived out there for a little over thirty years. Uh, I sent each of you, each of the Commissioners a letter, uh, about a week or so ago, but I'll encapsulate some of the things that were in that short note that I sent you. In the early nineties and into two thousand, I was involved with Keystone Civic Association, and I was fortunate enough to sit on the first group that came up with the Keystone Community Plan. And also sat on the group that revised it. Now, I don't know whether it's been revised more than once or not. Do y'all, do y'all know? Mr. Fay? Do you know? Has the community plan been revised more than once?
I don't believe it has, but please continue.
At any rate, when we talk density out there and swapping wetlands for homes, I don't think any of us thought there'd be an issue with one house per five acres. This gentleman owns a little over five acres, two of which are wetlands, and those wetlands adjoin an ELAP site that I believe your predecessors bought. So that's a good thing. The hearing master, or the, used to be hearing masters, hearing officer now, I guess, recommended that this thing be approved, provided that not more than one house be built on that two plus acres. I agree with that as a, as a Keystone owner and as one of the original folks that worked with the plan. And we did that plan with y'all's help, with your staff's help, both of those, the plan and the subsequent update. The, the, the planning folks here tell me they can't make the decision that needs to be made. Only you folks can make it. And as a Keystone owner, I see no reason why this family shouldn't be able to build a three thousand square foot house on five acres, even though part of it is wetlands. There should be, there should be no provision or, or no vote to include the wetlands in this. He's got over two acres, and he wants to build a three thousand foot, square foot, single family dwelling on that acreage, and he has no plans to develop outside that. I encourage you all to approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you for your comments and for your service on the, uh, on the, on the association that created the plan. Uh, is there anyone else in person here to speak to this item? Please come forward, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. Honorable Board of Commissioners, my name is Janice Manson-Hing, P.O. Box ninety-five, Odessa, Florida, three three five five six. I am with the Keystone Civic Association Board of Directors, and I speak on behalf of the Keystone Civic Association Board of Directors in reference to the comp plan amendment nineteen dash oh nine. I would like to reiterate that the Keystone Civic Association does not oppose a single family home. Our foremost concern is piercing the Keystone Odessa Community Plan. We respectfully ask that this be codified as a unique parcel so that it cannot be duplicated by future or past land purchases. Thank you, honorable Commissioners, for being sensitive to our applicant and to the Keystone community and to the Keystone Civic Association. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments and service on the board. Uh, I believe we have someone that's signed up to speak virtually.
I guess, good evening, Hillsborough County Commissioners, and thank you for your time this evening. My name is Brandon Kemp, and I've been a Bay Area resident all of my life. I'm a partner of one of the largest personal injury law firms in the community known as Kemp, Rouge and Green Law Group. Not only that, I'm also a property owner of a five acre parcel in the beautiful Keystone area. My property address is one eight seven two five Juretts Road in Odessa, and it's there where my wife and I are currently building our dream home on Lake Island Ford, where we hope to complete construction in the next twelve months. I'm here tonight, virtually of course, to offer my complete support of comprehensive plan amendment nineteen dash zero nine. The subject five acre parcel located on Boy Scout Road has been exploited by illegal dumping of debris for many years and has become an eyesore for the otherwise beautiful community of Keystone. It's my view that a single family home located on this property would be a welcome addition to the community of existing residential homes. Not only that, it would also serve to eliminate the illegal dumping on the property that we all have to look at every time we drive by. The subject property in this proposed amendment is five acres, just like mine, where construction has been ongoing for quite some time now. I do not see any reason why the community wouldn't be better served by allowing this amendment to pass so that we can permanently get rid of the eyesore and welcome another single family residence to the area. Thank you so much for your time and your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp, for your comments. Okay, we're gonna hold off on, um, board discussion or vote until after the oral argument. Uh, so would staff like to, like, introduce, introduce that?
Yes, Commissioners, uh, the next portion of the agenda is the, the companion rezoning item is rezoning, uh, twenty-two dash zero nine two six. Uh, the request is rezoned, the approximately five acre parcel that's located on the west side of, uh, Boy Scout Road, from agricultural rural to agricultural single family, um, estate, which is permits, the agricultural rural permits a minimum lot size of five acres, the agricultural AS zero point four district, uh, permits a minimum lot size of two point five acres. The applicant, as noted, has proposed a restriction that would limit development of the parcel to one single family unit. Uh, the surrounding development pattern consists of agricultural AR zoning and planned developments. The planned developments in the area provide from range of minimum lot sizes from one acre to five acres. Based on the restricting, limiting the parcel to one unit and the surrounding development pattern, the mix of zoning districts that again permitted, um, minimum lots ranging, lot sizes ranging from one to five acres, uh, Development Service staff did find the request rezoning compatible with surrounding development pattern subject to approval of the companion CPA nineteen dash zero nine. Uh, we'll note for the record that Planning Commission, uh, found the request inconsistent, and the hearing officer didn't recommend approval, and we're available for any questions.
All right, thank you. Uh, this time, can the clerk administer the oath to anyone who's gonna speak to this item?
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, you may be seated.
Um, Mr. Pressman?
Okay. Very good. I use the arrows? Yep, uh, right now. Good to go. Thank you again, Ms. Chairman, and...
You have up to ten minutes, the clerk can change the time.
Um, I, I will keep this short. Todd Pressman, two hundred and second Avenue South, number four fifty-one in St. Petersburg. As Mr. Bray has indicated, this is rezoning from AR to AS dash zero point four R. Again, comes to you with ZHM approval, Development Services recommendation approval. I think we're all well aware of the location at this point. Pressing upon the point, the goal is a single family home on a five acre lot that adheres to the current area development. Deserved by the Board, the future lands we've heard by the Board of County Commissioners remanded it for rezoning to be compatible, which we're bringing forward today. Uh, report from Development Services is very strong in noting consistent compatibility that the request is approvable. Planning Commission Staff Report specifically does say would be in line with development pattern, would not result in a radical departure. That's from the Planning Commission report. Zoning Hearing Master, very simply, is for approval. Uh, we appreciate your consideration, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, anyone here, uh, in support? Want to speak to it? Anyone in opposition? Okay, Planning Commission?
Good evening, Commissioners. David Hay with your Planning Commission staff. I'll be very brief. The Planning Commission, uh, staff in review of the, uh, proposed rezoning to the agricultural single family zero point four, uh, zoning district did find that the subject site, um, was inconsistent, um, with a number of the, uh, policies within the comprehensive plan dealing with overall compatibility, uh, to existing zoning, uh, within the area. And overall, the proposed rezoning was found by the Planning Commission would allow for the development pattern that is not consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of, uh, unincorporated Hillsborough County, and is recommending to you this evening that this zoning be found inconsistent. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Hearing Master?
The zoning hearing master considered the applicant's request to rezone the subject property to agricultural single family estate with restrictions. The applicant is proposing a restriction limiting develop of, development of the subject property to one single family dwelling unit. The applicant has applied for a comprehensive plan amendment CPA nineteen oh nine, seeking to amend the future land use map designation from AR one to five to AE one to two point five. The request of rezoning is being heard concurrently with comprehensive plan amendment CPA nineteen oh nine. The Planning Commission staff found CPA nineteen oh nine inconsistent, as did the Planning Commission Board, with the comprehensive plan. The Odessa Keystone Community Plan is found to discourage but not prohibit plan amendments to densities higher than one dwelling unit per five gross acres. The zoning hearing master concluded by recommending approval of the rezoning, subject to the approval of comprehensive plan amendment nineteen oh nine, and subject to the following restriction, that development of the property is restricted to one single family residential dwelling unit.
All right, thank you. Uh, we don't have anyone in the queue, and since this is my, um, district, I just made a couple of quick comments. I, I think this is clearly a situation where our policies and common sense are not, uh, aligned here. They have the companion rezoning that we requested, they have broad support, they're just asking to build one single family home. Um, I, I can tell you, again, from experience, and many of us that serve here know that, that if this was a real issue, the Keystone Civic Association would have this room filled in opposition. Uh, I do have the letter here, and I was gonna mention, um, what Ms. Manson-Hing, um, referenced. Um, they do clearly do not oppose a single family home. Uh, they were asking for us to, to, if we could codify the uniqueness of the CPA and just, and ensure that this will not pierce the Keystone Odessa Community Plan. So Adam, I guess my question to you is, um, is that something that we can necessarily, can we quote unquote codify this, or how can we, um, provide any additional comfort or conditions to, so the community is ensured that, um, this is a unique situation?
Commissioner, Board members, what I would suggest is that establish, if the board is inclined to approve this, establish a legislative history and, and the basis for treating this as a unique fact set situation. Uh, and I would suggest as follows, the subject property, uh, for the plan amendment is folio seven, one seven four nine point zero two hundred. Uh, it was previously combined with folio number seventeen forty-nine point triple zero five. That together was a little over eight acre parcel that would have allowed the development of one dwelling unit. Those two parcels were separated, uh, without going through appropriate subdivision review, which resulted in the unbuildable lot configuration that's here today. And the parcel to the south has been purchased... Those two parcels were separated without going through appropriate subdivision review, which resulted in the unbuildable lot configuration that's here today. And the parcel to the south has been purchased by ELAP and is now part of ELAP holding and is protected from future development. So the situation here would be the initial parcel that was buildable at eight acres and would have supported one home. It was a before situation. If the board approves this zoning and comprehensive plan amendment, with that purchase of the additional 3.1 acres by ELAP, the end result will also be the ability to put one home on those two parcels. So I'd suggest if the board would recognize those facts as being unique and distinct to this situation, and being that distinct fact set and the testimony heard here today being the basis for the legislative action of the comprehensive plan amendment, that would distinguish this from any future situation and not set a... It highlights the weight of the discouragement. It takes a strong fact set such as that in this unique circumstance to support that plan amendment to less than one unit per five acres.
Okay, we'll go into a board discussion. I would just ask whoever the maker of the motion is if they would mind including Adam's comments in there. One last question. They also wanted to have on record that this does not pierce the Keystone-Odessa Community Plan. Can we get that on the record?
Yeah, and I think, I'm sorry. Yes, I think that that Keystone Community Plan uses the word "discourage," so it's a very strong term. So what the board would be considering here is this unique fact set, the situation that led to the applicant owning a parcel for all these years that is essentially unbuildable at this moment, would say that it is not piercing the community plan, it's recognizing that this is the exception to the rule and that the general discouragement remains in place, but the fact set here support an arguably inequitable outcome for the applicant.
So it's safe to say the community plan's not compromised?
That would be my position, yes.
Is that a fair, okay. Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Chairman, you clarified that. I guess the applicant, I think a lot of times we use legal terminology, you know, I've pierced corporate veils plenty of times, and I sure hope the standard is not that for a community plan, because piercing corporate veils are very difficult to do, you have to prove companies or alter egos of a person. So I want to clarify, the standard is us. The standard is us, for as the board, to recognize the uniqueness of a situation like this, and for us as a collective body to make that decision. We're not in essence piercing anything. What we are doing is we are making a determination and setting this apart from any other property within the Keystone community, and listening to the folks that just came up and spoke, especially one of the gentlemen that sounds like he was one of the originators when the community plan was made, and young lady, I grew up just like you in the orange groves of Valrico, so I understand the want to live the way that you want to live. And so I'm going to be in full support of this. I'll let some other Commissioners, I understand, Mr. Chairman, you're in a spot to make a motion because you're the chairman, so I will wait and listen to if there's any other Commissioners that take any issue with it, but I'm in full support of this.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much. So what I wanted to do actually was go ahead and make a motion for approval of this, and I specifically want to incorporate by reference into the motion everything that Mr. Gormley just said as the factual predicate for why we are taking this step up to and including the language about not piercing the community plan. And I want to put on the record that the totality of the record makes it very clear that this is completely contingent on a one-house-on-five-acre scenario, which is in keeping with the overall goal of the Odessa community.
Second. Okay, so the...
And Keystone.
Now we can't vote.
I know you were next, I remember you were next. Okay, so the motion is for the adoption of CPA 1909, and then after we bid on this, then we'll vote on the rezoning. And that was by Commissioner Cohen, seconded by Commissioner Wostol and Kemp. Commissioner Kemp, I believe you're...
I just wanted to move and do almost exactly what Commissioner Cohen was doing if it wasn't going to be done. It doesn't sound like there's anything to this, any opposition, and I'm glad everyone was able to come to a resolution in this.
Okay, great. Can we have a roll call vote?
Hagan?
Yes.
Cameron Cepeda?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Wostel?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Now if we can have a motion on the rezoning?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Wostel, second, Commissioner Kemp. No comments, please record your vote on the rezoning, RZ 22-0926. Roll call vote, please.
Hagan?
Yes.
Cameron Cepeda?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Wostel?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Now we'll go to CPA 2213.
HTV, may you please share 2213 staff side? Perfect. Good evening, Carla Yanoz for Planning Commission staff. So the request is for a privately initiated comprehensive plan amendment. This is 2213, also known as 6359 County Road 579. Next slide, please. Again, privately initiated, 6.16 acres in size. It's to change the future land use from residential four to light industrial plan. Next slide, please. This plan amendment is located in the middle of the October 2022 plan amendment cycle. The property is located within the limits of the Thonotasasa Community Plan. It's east of County Road 579, which is also known as Mango Road, and it's south of Road in unincorporated Hillsborough County. Next slide. Before you have on this slide is an aerial photograph with the surrounding uses labeled. The property is located in an area with light, heavy industrial, light commercial, public, quasi-public institutional use. The predominant uses are mostly non-residential in nature. As you can see on the screen, starting at Interstate 4 and heading northbound on County Road 579, which is Mango Road, you'll see that you have the Lazy Days RV Resort and dealership. You also have a travel center, a gas station, whatnot, and some car dealership as well. And further a little bit up, you'll see the Amazon Distribution Center and the Cascrete Manufacturing Facility. So the area is mostly non-residential uses. Next slide, please. The subject site has an adopted future land use of residential four, which allows residential, suburban-scale neighborhood, commercial, office uses, multipurpose projects. The adopted residential four category allows about four dwelling units to the acre. It also allows 0.25 floor area ratio. Now, the subject site is surrounded by residential four to the northwest, northwest, and southwest. Light industrial plan is found to the south, and public quasi-public is found to the east. Next slide, please. The proposed future land use is light industrial. Now, this is going to typically allow a light industrial uses such as processing, manufacturing, recycling, and storage of materials as predominant uses. The site does have frontage, again, on State Road 579. This road is actually exempt from commercial locational criteria pursuant to a resolution that was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners last year sometime in August. Now, the proposed light industrial plan category does not produce any residential density, but it does allow for non-residential floor area ratio of 0.75. Next slide, please. Here we have the potential impacts. So under the res four, you would produce approximately 24 units and 67,000 square feet of non-residential use. Under the light industrial plan, you'll have zero units and up to 200,000 square feet of non-residential use. Now, in summary, the proposed change would add non-residential intensity and eliminates the residential density, and it also introduces the possibility of light industrial uses such as processing, manufacturing, recycling. Now, more importantly, one thing I didn't mention during the aerial slide is right behind the subject site, it's to the east, you'll, there is the county's landfill. So pursuant to the Board of County Commissioners' resolution that was adopted last year, they basically identified that non-residential uses is probably a lot better than having residential significantly right next to the county landfill. So that was the board's direction, that's why they approved the resolution last year. Now, next slide, please. Planning Commission staff did review for consistency with the comprehensive plan, and we found it consistent. We found it consistent also with the livable community's element and pursuant to that resolution, so it helps support the request. Next slide, please. And at this point, the Planning Commission found the HC CPA 22-13 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Next slide. And I will be, I'll be here if you have any questions with regards to this.
Thank you for the presentation. Is the applicant here?
Okay, so which one are you looking for? This one?
Taylor. Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Just the same thing as before.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, number 451 St. Petersburg. I do want to say really quickly on the last case, Mr. Gormley was a tremendous help, not proactive, but guiding through those principles was extreme help, and I did want to note that. This is HC CPA 22-13. We're located in the Sefner area. You've seen the location of the site by the staff. It's actually these two parcels. You can see that there's been some industrial activity on it previously. Staff report notes the property is located in an area with light, heavy industrial, light commercial, public quasi-institutional uses as predominant uses in the area. As Carla said, the Hillsborough County Taylor landfill and household hazardous waste center is also located abutting the site. You can see there's plenty of industrial, future land use category in the area as well. This is the relationship of the landfill and the site. Immediately to the south is the new Amazon Center. Across the street is the Cascrete Center, which is a very intensive manufacturing industrial use. This is the Amazon Center, which is abutting, beautiful, beautiful, nice site. This is the Cascrete, and you can see in the back, you can see the manufacturing and industrial uses in the rear of that site. As Carla mentioned, at the intersection immediately to the south is a major commercial node, has all types of intensive commercial uses that are proliferate throughout typical interstate exchange. Staff report notes the comprehensive plan also furthers the vision of the Thonotasasa Community Plan, which seeks to protect the area's rural character by directing non-residential uses to specific areas, which this does. Also, that this is a unique circumstance of the county landfill and the existing non-residential development pattern in the area. And as Carla mentioned, the Board of County Commissioners passed a directive that because the Taylor landfill is such an intensive use in this area, that special consideration should be made for the uses proposed that are compatible with it, which this would be. So with that, again, we have staff support. We've had absolutely no calls or emails or communications from the public on this, so we appreciate your consideration and ask your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. On this public hearing, would anyone like to speak to this item? What's the pleasure of the board?
Approve. Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Kemp. No comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
CPA 2219.
Good evening. HTV, if you could please bring up the presentation for 22-19. Good evening, this is Jillian Massey with Planning Commission staff.
Again, Jillian Massey with Planning Commission's NAF. I'll be presenting on HC CPA 22-19, Citrus Park Lane and Easy Street. Next slide, please. This plan amendment is part of the October 2022 plan amendment cycle. It's located in the northwest unincorporated county, south of Citrus Park Drive between Easy Street and Citrus Park Lane. Next slide, please. This is a privately initiated map amendment located on approximately 8.18 acres. There are seven folios involved in this application. They're located within the urban service area and within the limits of the northwest Hillsborough Community Plan. Again, the site's located south of Citrus Park Drive between Easy Street and Citrus Park Lane. Surrounding uses are mainly light commercial uses, including the Citrus Park Mall and shopping centers to the west and northwest, the Veterans Expressway and Upper Tampa Bay Trail to the east. The Big Cat Rescue is located further south of the site. There are office buildings and a hotel along Citrus Park Lane, and residential uses extend outside the periphery of the commercial uses that surround the site. Next slide, please. This is the adopted future land use map for the subject site, which is currently designated as residential nine. It's mainly surrounded by urban mixed-use 20 to the west, Citrus Park Village to the north, residential nine to the east, and residential four and residential six further east. Further west is residential 20. Next slide, please. The proposal before you was to change the subject site from residential nine to urban mixed-use 20, which allows for residential, regional-scale commercial uses such as a mall, office, and business park uses, research corporate park uses, light industrial, multipurpose, and clustered residential, and/or mixed-use projects. Next slide, please. The slide outlines the potential impacts of the proposed map amendment. As you can see, it will allow for an increase in residential density and an increase in commercial intensity. The map amendment would allow for an increase from a potential nine dwelling units per acre to a potential 20 dwelling units per acre, and the non-residential intensity would increase from a potential .5 FAR or 175,000 square feet, whichever is less, to a potential FAR of 1.0. And the numbers on the screen represent the potential dwelling units and square footage of non-residential development that would occur from this potential change. If changed to the urban mixed-use 20 category, additional uses such as regional-scale commercial and light industrial uses could be considered. Next slide, please. This application was sent out for agency review, and there were no objections. Informational comments were provided and can be found in your packet. Additionally, Planning Commission has reviewed this application and has found it to be consistent with several goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. It was found to be consistent with policies relating to the growth management strategy and development in the urban service area, community development, and the Northwest Area Community Plan, and all of these are outlined in your packet. Next slide, please. And the Planning Commission found HC CPA 22-19 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here? Good evening, sir. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Mark Bentley, 401 East Jackson Street, Tampa, 33602. Represent the applicants. The intent tonight is to integrate and bring uniformity to two independent projects that happen to be contiguous, have common zoning, and share common access. That would be Easy Street to the west and Citrus Park Lane to the east. I'd also like to clarify for the record, initially, the McDonald's Restaurant parcel, which is developed, was part of the application and subsequently was withdrawn. I want to get that on the record. The legal description for the plan amendment is correct. Notably, all the properties within the plan amendment boundaries were the subject of the flex provision in 2013, but for property owned by Radiant Oil, which is 1.7 acres. So in order to qualify for the flex, the flex was from residential nine to UMU 20, which we're seeking tonight for the entire property. The staff has to make a determination of consistency with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. So staff did that in 2013, and here we are. So staff did that in 2013, and here we are again tonight. So it's simply from our perspective of reaffirmation of what are already transpired. But let me just show you. The red is subject to the plan amendment tonight, and it's actually Residential Nine on the map, but that was subject to the flex provision, so that's effectively UMU Twenty, which is what we're seeking likewise this piece here. The only portion that's not subject to the flexed or actually an amendment is the Radiant Oil piece, which is right behind McDonald's, and it's 1.9 acre, 1.7 acres, I'm sorry. Some of these properties are actually developed, there's a hotel and an office building. Originally, the applicant was simply Radiant and, uh, but your staff had requested that we seek cooperation and partnership with the adjacent property owner, which we have done to allow land use compatibility, uniformity, and consistency throughout these parcels. So from a practical standpoint, the change to UMU will simply be a recognition of what was approved by the Board of County Commissioners in 2013. In terms of community reach out, the two largest property owners, that would be Big Cat Rescue and Andrew Shafi, and their properties are highlighted here on the overhead. They've sent in letters to support, I, hopefully they filter down to the commission's, uh, chambers. But in, in any event, uh, staff has found it consistent, there have been no objections. This Planning Commission unanimously found the, uh, plan amendment consistent with the comp plan, and we would respectfully request your approval tonight. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Uh, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to speak to this item?
Good evening, Chair. Um, I'm with the applicant representative. So, uh, Ryan Manassie, good evening, County Commissioners, with Johnson Pope, 401 East Jackson Street, uh, Suite 3100. Um, the slide on screen, um, just to reiterate some facts, the area of the request is outlined in red, and, uh, again, this request is to designate the subject area as UMU Twenty Future Land Use Category. Additionally, this slide shows the predominant UMU Twenty Future Land Use Designation to the west and northwest of the subject area to include the UMU Twenty Amendment area that separates our request. What we're showing here in red is the shaded area, um, which was never part of a rezoning with a flex or a future land use amendment to the UMU Twenty category, as Mark previously spoke to. Additionally, the areas to the south, I'm sorry, I'm getting used to the overhead here. Additionally, the areas to the south of the newly proposed project were already rezoned with a mix of uses, but more importantly, they're already flexed with the UMU Twenty, uh, entitlements and land use category. You may have noticed on the previous slide, the area between the two existing flexes is already being the UMU Twenty category, uh, which is shown in the red on this screen. That's because those two areas, uh, were a result of two amendments to the UMU Twenty category. I'd like to mention again that during our pre-application meeting with staff, it was recommended that we attempt to include Easy Street Parcel, which is to the west of the subjects, the main area of the subject site, um, to, uh, integrate and not break that category, that UMU Twenty category from the west, which is at Citrus Park Mall, going east. Thank you. This slide further shows some of the existing UMU Twenty areas to include an already flexed UMU Twenty area, which are part of our request, the red being the area without the UMU Twenty flex or amendment at this time. If approved, the red and yellow areas will be a consistent UMU Twenty category on the future land use map. To conclude, this request integrates multiple rezonings with existing UMU Twenty flexes. These existing uses include office buildings, hotels, and associated parking. The new uses are intended to be mixed use, consistent with the UMU Twenty category. Additionally, we've shown, uh, our request provides uniformity and consistency with land use plan designations. The request has been found consistent by the Planning Commission staff and is consistent with many of the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. Thank you, and Mark Bentley and I are available for any questions, should you have any.
Thank you, sir. Uh, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to speak to the item? What's the pleasure of the board?
Move of approval.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers.
And I'll just say, I, I appreciate, um, if they can do anything about, it's right along the trail, so I think there needs to be some kind of bicycle amenity there and some other things that could be put right in there. I'll just make that suggestion.
It is called Easy Street, so.
Easy to remember.
Agreed. Uh, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Last item.
Andrea Papender, Planning Commission staff. Uh, HTV, if you could pull up the, um, 22-21 presentation. That is the incorrect one.
That's the incorrect one?
Yeah. It's the applicant's presentation. Again, Andrea Papender, Planning Commission staff. This is HC CPA 22-21, 2244 University Square Mall. Uh, next slide, please. This is a privately initiated small-scale map amendment. The site is approximately 6.67 acres. The request is to go from Residential Twenty and Urban Mixed Use Twenty to the Innovation Corridor Mixed Use Thirty-five category. Next slide, please. The site is in the urban service area and within the University Area Community Plan. The site is also just north of the city of Tampa boundary. Next slide, please. This is an aerial of the subject site and the surrounding properties. Uh, the subject site is within the University Square Mall and is north of East Fowler Avenue. Uh, the site is surrounded mo- mainly by light and heavy commercial uses, especially along the Fowler Avenue. North and west of the mall is multifamily, HOA land, group homes, and public institutional uses. East of the site is light commercial multifamily, and northeast is single-family residential. Uh, next slide, please. The adopted future land use categories for the site are Residential Twenty and Urban Mixed Use Twenty. The site is surrounded by the Innovation Corridor Mixed Use Thirty-five District. To the north is, um, Residential Twenty, Residential Six, and then along Fowler's Office Commercial Twenty. Next slide, please. So the blue dashed line on the map shows the city of Tampa boundary. So the future land use categories for the city of Tampa, south along Fowler Avenue, are community commercial Thirty-five, and then further south are Residential Thirty-five, public semi-public, and residential ten. And then east across Bruce B. Downs Boulevard, the categories are public semi-public, heavy industrial, and light industrial. Next slide, please. The proposal before you today is to go to the Innovation Corridor Mixed Use Thirty-five category. Uh, next slide, please. Moving to this Innovation Corridor Mixed Use Thirty-five category would increase density on site to 232 units, it'd also increase intensity on site to 581,090 square feet. And if approved, the plan amendment would permit biomedical research, institutional and hospital uses, and neighborhood commercial would no longer be permitted on site. For the portion of land that's in the Residential Twenty, the regional scale retail, commercial, business park, research corporate park, and light industrial uses would also be permitted on site. Next slide, please. So the plan amendment site is consistent with the comprehensive plan, specifically the policies on neighborhood community development and neighborhood level design compatibility. The site is in a location consistent with the intent of Innovation Corridor Mixed Use Thirty-five designation, as it is surrounded by this future land use category, and is part of the existing university mall site. And all these policies can be found in your packet. Next slide, please. Plan amendment is also consistent with the University Area Community Plan Goal Five, but plan amendment site is within the urban infill redevelopment area, and it's part of the University Square Mall, which will provide jobs and economic development. And these policies can also be found in your packet. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, based on this, Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Uh, that concludes the presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, applicant here? Each representative, representative will be given three minutes. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Um, good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Kevin Reali, 401 East Jackson Street, with us, Terrence Burello Law Firm. Uh, next slide, please. Um, here before you today with a straightforward application on what's otherwise a very complex development. Um, the, uh, zoomed in picture here, the, the Planning Commission showed what this looks like further out, but when you look in closely, you can see that what this is, is a missing donut hole in an otherwise, uh, development that's been, um, uh, redeveloping for some time for University Square Mall in the surrounding area. When the process was started, it was under different ownership. Uh, through the redevelopment process, it's now under common ownership, and so we want to bring that piece in, uh, and, and the Burlington Parcel, as we call this, uh, will, will move to a new location in the site. Next slide, please. And so it will complete the ICMU Thirty-five for the area. Uh, next slide, please. So ICMU Thirty-five was essentially created to redevelop, uh, University Square Mall. It's a regional activity center, it has its own roadway system, its own cross-sections are part of the plan development. Um, it clusters uses, it, it vertically integrates, and, and all of those are details that will come back before you, uh, with the plan development that'll bring this piece in. And for those that have been on, um, the board longer, uh, you have seen iterations of this in the past as well. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, next slide, please. These are just some examples, but we don't need to go over those today. Next, this, uh, so this is, uh, just a snapshot of the PD. I know we're not discussing the PD today, but just to give the, the commission idea of how this was planned from the beginning, you can, you can sort of see underneath that colored overlay where the roadway network that's contemplated, um, includes this piece, and, uh, we're just bringing that in, uh, and then the, the, the PD will update and, uh, the redevelopment process will begin and probably continue for, for many years. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so in conclusion, uh, you, you know, the, the PD itself will be very complicated. This application is straightforward, it fills the hole in the donut, it's been anticipated since the beginning, it's consistent and compatible, uh, we have unanimous, uh, finding of compatibility from Planning Commission and support from staff. We do have members of the team here, but they're, they're not going to speak unless the commission has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to speak to the item? Not coming up a motion?
A move of approval.
Second.
Motion approved, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cohen, Commissioner Wostel.
I just wanted to make, when it's district-specific things, is there anything specific? I know you've probably been dealing with this for a while, so, but I'd like to hear any comments from District Three, if there were some, if not. Yep, okay.
Yeah, I think as the applicant indicated, it's pretty, uh,
Yeah.
pretty straightforward. Okay, if you have another comment, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Right now, if we can have a motion to adopt, uh, that's CPA 2213,
Move of approval.
2219 and 2221?
Second.
Motion to approve, um, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cohen. No comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, thank you. We're adjourned.